Charlie usually jumps on about five minutes, doesn't he?
Oh, curious.
All right. Oh, geez. This is. There you go, Charlie. He's muted, but other than that. Okay, Charlie, can you unmute and just acknowledge that you're good?
Have I?
Yep, perfect. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's now the zoning board of appeals on March 12th at 7:01. And I'll just go around the screen and have everybody, if you will, log in for the record. I'm Woody Chidick, Chair.
Hey, McMorris.
Charles Higginson.
Okay.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey.
All right.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, and sitting in as well as a clerk, Montana Cassell and John Howland, the building inspector. So, with that call to order, we have three pieces of regular business, one really. And we have a little, a couple of admins. If you picked up your packet, we got two different meeting minute notes, and we can deal with that at the end. So the first piece of regular business is a special permit regarding adding fill, raising the elevation of the rear yard at 31 Bow Street. Request from the applicant to continue. I assume that's John Howland. Is this still before the conservation commission?
Yes, it is. I think they're waiting to resolve that before they proceed to this, the steps and their locations.
All right. Well, I would make a motion to continue this hearing until April 2nd.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Woody Chidick, aye.
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
All right.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Great. Lee Darcey had said so, and Charlie, I guess you're on board.
We lost Charlie for temporary time, but I'll put him back in.
Come on, Monica, geez. Montana, you gotta have to. We're gonna make you the official watch, watch out person. Anyway, the next hearing is for great Brewster Trail. This is a continuance filed by Kevin Sullivan on behalf of himself, I guess. Isn't it? Is it Sullivan? Yeah, yeah. So at any rate, they, at our last hearing, we asked the applicant to rethink some of the components of massing and height, things of that sort. So I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until April 2nd, since that's been the request of the applicant. Okay, moved and seconded by Dave McMorris. All in favor, Woody Chidick, aye.
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, now, the other, we have a third hearing. I'm gonna ask Dave McMorris to, as Vice Chair, to take over. It's 133 North Main Street. I've got a conflict that I just discovered. I guess that my son-in-law and daughter are the architects, so I will kind of vacate my screen and, and go on mute while this hearing continues, takes place.
All right. So we have, the next hearing is 133 North Main Street, and Montana, who do we have presenting on that?
On Green is presenting, and I just pulled her in.
Hi there.
Hi. So. Can you tell us a little bit about what you proposed to do here?
Um, I am looking to, on one side of the house, there's already an existing dormer, and I just wanted to extend that dormer across that, that primary bedroom, so that I can get the bath, the, the primary bathroom is at like a significant slant, so that we can get that bathroom head height and some natural light in there.
Okay, so I'm looking at the, at the front page of the permit review set with the photographs.
Yeah.
And the bottom right corner is the east view from the side yard.
Yep.
Is that where you proposed to do the work? From the dormer that we see at the front, coming back?
Let me see, is that, that's on the Henderson, the Henderson side of the property? Is that right?
Take a look.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, yes. Okay. So can you tell us how much additional non-conforming facade you'll be creating?
Okay, um, so the is, is John Teriyaki on here? Cause he is also supposed to be here for this?
I have John Freiner and an iPhone.
You have him on an iPhone?
Um, the person's user just says iPhone.
Okay. Cause he's the architect and he was definitely planning to be here, but I think maybe he's just not on yet because we were scheduled for eight and maybe he's just on.
That would make some sense.
Dave, Dave, I think the volume of the extension is 240 square feet, which is on page A 2.2 on the top. Left-hand side. That, that helps. Yeah, you gotta have to look through a little bit, but that's.
What, what's that number again, John?
Uh, the page number is A 2.2. That would be the top half of the page with the volume increase in the shed dormer.
Yeah, that gives us the cubic feet inside the dormer. But I'm looking for the this poor footage of non-conforming facade. I know I've seen it, and I know it's pretty limited. It's showing no changes to the sides.
Let's see.
And actually, that might just be. We'll have to, to wait, cause that, that might be a typo. Cause it's, no, it's still that, showing volume and not aside. But it looks to be a very very small condition.
Yeah, I mean, there, it's not increasing any, any square footage. It's just, it's just the it's just the head height of that, of that wall that's already there.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that's, I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for.
So the floor volume already exists?
Yes.
Uh, so that, the, the change is above the floor?
Correct.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, there's, it won't be, there's no change to the, to the, the footprint or, or the existing second floor itself print. It's just, it's just extending that dormer so that
I see.
That area is kind of head height.
I was just trying to gauge, like, you know, on that, on that side, I know it's pretty close to the lot line. Some of that stuff is less than 15 feet, but I think that where the dormer would be, I was just trying to figure out if I could tell how far in from the lot line the the dormer is. In other words, if, if that area was currently less than 15 feet and becomes taller by the dormer, but I think it's for the, actually, here's, here's John.
Yeah. Yes, I apologize. I was having some computer issues. Sorry for the delay.
Hi, John.
Hi, how are you? So I don't, I'm not sure, John Teriyaki, Teriyaki Architectural Design. I'm not sure if you would like me to go through the drawings or whether.
Yeah, I think we just had a couple of quick questions. First was the, is there any additional non-conforming facade that's being created?
Uh, yes, maybe, maybe I'll go through the drawings just to clarify that. It's basically happening laterally. Yeah, I'm just gonna share my screen.
Okay.
And you all have the packets, and we have the site plan showing where the house is, and basically the dormer is in question. It's, if you look from the backyard towards the back of the house, this is the existing shed dormer where my cursor is. And then we are basically keeping that in the same plane, but we're extending it left and right to be able to fit a master suite. And I'm going to go to the drawings to give you a better idea of that. So the dormer right now, here's the existing second floor plan. This is Main Street here. Here is the existing dormer above this main roof line. So we have low, low headroom areas to the left and right of the dormer, and we're trying to capture more headroom.
Mm-hmm.
So here's the existing east elevation showing the existing dormer. And in theory, part of that roof is also non-conforming, which we're showing it at an angle here. Let me go to the proposed. So we are extending that dormer slightly to the, to, towards the back. As you can see, the crosshatch pattern, let me just zoom in a little bit to kind of. So the, the, the crosshatch pattern is the existing dormer and the single slope hatch is the the kind of where we're extending it, which happens to fall in front of a non-conforming roof. So we are extending it over a non-conforming roof, so we are adding a little more flat facade area by, by doing that.
Okay.
But we're not increasing the height further, and we're not getting any closer to the side lot line.
Okay, yeah, I had a question on that, Sean. On the application, it shows the side setback number two going from, oh, it doesn't matter, it's conforming. Never mind.
Okay. So we are still within this non-conforming zone. We're not making that any worse other than extending the dormer facade
Mm-hmm.
over that non-conforming roof left, kind of towards the rear a little bit and towards the, the front to capture more headroom in that bedroom.
Okay. Has there been any input from any of the neighbors?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard from anyone except, well, I've, I've heard from a couple just saying, so exciting, welcome to the neighborhood. But I haven't, I haven't had anybody. I haven't gotten any input that, from anyone saying that.
Has, has notice been given to the, uh, butters?
Yes.
One thing in the application, I think there's a section where it says date and nature of other structures and additions. And we, we put in, you know, garden sheds, meaning anything other than the house. But there have been additions to the historic house over time, obviously.
Okay.
So that, that's the extent of the, the relief requested. Everything else is conforming zoning.
Okay, I think it would be useful if there is any additional non-conforming facade. If you could give us that number, that would be helpful.
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's on this drawing.
This shows cubic feet.
Oh, cubic feet, yes. We also have the, the facade area. Yeah, I think the reason why we're the cubic feet was to be a little more accurate because since the eggs, part of that existing projection is a roof slope rather than a facade. We actually thought that the volume would be more accurate.
Mm-hmm.
So we were trying to give you the, basically the volume of this triangle extruded along that facade area.
I see.
Just, just because otherwise it's a net, there's really like, since we're looking at the projection on a 2D drawing, the roof is also like a facade.
Right.
So in theory, the net change is zero, but it's not really zero because we're adding a little more volume.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Right, anyone on the board have questions or comments?
I have just kind of a housekeeping question. Who is the actual owner of the house right now, today?
Um, it is, it's Matt McGovern.
And, and is the house under agreement, or are you?
Yes, yep.
When is your proposed closing date?
Um, I, we don't have a specific closing date. This is a close family friend who is just kind of holding it in escrow while I am going through a divorce.
Okay, and the plan, it says the client was David and Courtney Kelly?
That's the previous owner.
Oh, okay.
Oh, is that the site plan?
This Merrill site plan says it's dated December 27, 2023, and it says the client is David and Courtney Kelly.
Huh, that's curious. That should be my name, but that's, that was the previous owner.
Okay, and how far away are the houses? On the plot plan, we just see one house. Are there houses on all the rest of the, the other three, the other three delineated parcels?
Yes.
And how far away are they?
They are all like, as close, as close as the Hendersons. The same would, would be the, is the case for the Gallaghers.
Okay, I would actually request that we have a an amended site plan that shows the, the outlines of the actual buildings.
That's a requirement that seems to be missed very often and shouldn't be. I think we've been pretty.
If I can speak on that a little bit, you know, this house, which is the most pertinent one, obviously is included because this is right where our dormer is. Uh, but when the, when the surveyors do these plans, you know, it is one thing to bring survey equipment and survey a property at a certain amount of cost, which in today's market is upwards of $3,000, $4,000. And they can't possibly survey the entire neighborhood, so they can trace from an aerial photo, which is not gonna be accurate. But they can certainly do that.
I, I do understand that, but it does, if you look in the application itself, it does require a site plan that shows the buildings on the adjacent land. And, you know, we, we always ask for that. We don't always get it. But it is important to know where those, you know, we can't really understand what the impact on a neighborhood is if we don't know where all the, all the adjacent structures are. I don't know that it needs a formal survey, but we do need to know where they are.
Uh, we can ask Merrill Engineering to, to trace an aerial photo to represent the remaining buildings.
Okay, cause we, you know, we've done this, we've gone through this with Merrill and, and actually the other engineers that, that show up a lot. Under the site plan subsection G, it asks for the boundary lines, names of owners, and locations and dimensions of all buildings, driveways, and parking areas on the immediately adjacent properties. So, you know.
Is that something that can be seen on like an assessor's map? That we might be able to pull up fairly quickly?
Well, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, it just has to live on the plan when we, when we come to a decision, the plan's filed with our decision.
And we can, we can have that resubmitted after this hearing. I know you're gonna continue it anyway.
Yeah, we'll continue till next month anyways, and that would be good.
So during that time period, we can ask Merrill to update this with those outlines as best as they can.
Okay, that would be helpful.
That's, if that would be okay.
Yep. Any other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm good, David.
Okay, thanks. Mike? Matt, anything, anything more? Charlie?
No, I mean, I think, as we talked about.
I keep trying to promote Charlie, but he won't come in, so.
All right, well, I'm gonna, to move that we continue this till the next hearing in April, and we'll have a draft decision at that time.
That sounds good, and we will submit that revised site plan in the meantime.
Excellent. Second?
I'll second your motion, Dave.
All right, all those in favor of continuing till April? Dave McMorris, aye?
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
All right, thank you very much, and Woody can come back.
Thank you. Okay, and I think Mike Dickey, didn't you talk to me a few weeks ago about wanting to volunteer to write the next decision?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's been a while since I've done one, so if you wanna sign this to me, happy to take it on.
I'll leave that up to Dave, but are you?
That's fine.
You're comfortable with that?
All right. Yeah. I did have one, one thing I just wanted to mention. I, I I listened to the tape of the meeting that I missed on the Brewster Road or Gray Brewster Trail property, and there, there was some question as to where the section is about stairs and bulkheads and all that kind of stuff, the projections. It's in the definitions under permitted projections. It's not anywhere in the bylaw or in the charts or any of that stuff. So I can never find it, but I found it this time.
I'm assuming, and I know, John, you may know, I, I don't have the draft in front of me, but didn't the definition section go to town meeting in the fall? Maybe that's been reorganized.
I, I think it was, I have, all I have is the town meeting article that was actually printed for the town meeting, uh, cause I think the state has, okay, part of the the zoning bylaw change at the town meeting, but not all of it. So until they look, locate all of it, we don't get a printed copy. Uh, so.
So I get, yeah, I'm still going. I guess everybody else is still going in the old version of a few years ago. So permitted projections. I don't think they changed anything from a wording standpoint.
I don't think so, yeah. They just, they just moved it someplace more findable.
We're gonna have to learn how to navigate all over again. Oh, man. Okay. Excellent. We have just a couple of administrative issues to take care of. Uh, I'd like to move up the last first. Are we, how are we looking for April 2nd? Anybody have a conflict, a known conflict?
Actually, I was gonna bring up, I, I actually do have a conflict on that night, so I, I could do any other day, or if you guys, if that day was best for you guys, I would, I would miss it.
Well, they'll be coming back to us. Dave, you are, you, you passed the, what's that test again called? The the
Mullen.
What? Mullen?
Mullen, yeah, I had to sign it too for the for the same case. But I think you can only sign it once, right?
Right. This one may go on for a while. I don't know. Um, Dave, but you're, you're, you're back okay in this one?
Yep.
And I would be, Mike, are you good for the 2nd of April?
Yeah, yeah, I don't see anything on my calendar.
Okay, Charlie, do you know if you're okay for the 2nd of April hearing?
Fine.
And good with you, Lee? Okay.
I'm fine, yep.
All right, so we've, we've agreed that it's April 2nd. Now, with the packet, we're two meeting minutes, but I'm not sure that everybody probably has had a opportunity to go through all of them, and if you're uncomfortable, we can certainly push this off until April. And since it's only three weeks anyway, but have people had a chance to look at these uh, hearing minutes or not? One's January, one's February.
I looked at the January one. I wasn't part of the February meeting per se. Yeah, I mean, I think I think they're very detailed, right, in it?
How do we feel about that?
The style might be a little bit different than what we're used to, but I think it captured the, the meeting, so I don't know. I figured maybe there'd be some chatter on that, but I mean, I think the content itself.
Yeah, some, some years ago, um, we were advised by town council that, that we didn't have to go into fight all the, all the detail, the back and forth and the and the metrics unless it was really germane. Montana, that might make your job a little easier.
Yeah, it's fine by me. I was just trying to make sure you guys have an accurate reflection.
It's not a criticism, but it's just, it may be, you know, somewhat unnecessary to go into, into great depth.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, I don't know. Well, how does the other rest of the board feel? Lee?
I think, you know, I mean, I know that the minutes, even though I take notes, I know that the minutes I always review when I'm writing decisions, so you know, I understand that, you know, some of them are lengthy. And maybe we don't need the, the, some of the back and forth, but to summarize some of the comments of the board members, I think is important, and I think, you know, the issues that we discuss are all. I mean, I understand how, what you're saying about the back and forth, cause I'm reading, you know, one that's uh, has a lot of detail. And I, um, you know, I sometimes find them very helpful when I'm drafting my opinions, but I, you know, I don't know whether you wanna have a limit, but I also think if everybody's commenting, everybody's brought up points, I think those, they should be reflected.
Okay. Other opinions, Dave, what about you?
Well, from a legal standpoint, as long as our decisions are tightly written and, you know, the reasoning is set out and the evidence that we've relied on is, is recited, the minutes are never going to really be an issue. They're only an issue when there's a hole in the in the decision and so many challenges at saying that, you know, there's no consideration of this or that, and then sometimes the minutes can be relevant. So I, you know, I think that whatever works best for everybody is fine. I, I, I don't think there's I don't think there's an excessive amount of detail in these. But I also think that the minutes that we are accustomed to getting were certainly complete enough as well. You know, all the, the sense of the board, the, the things the board was interested in, that what we requested, all that's always been reflected in the minutes, and I think that's the important stuff.
Yeah, it, I, I'm just thinking, and I'm, I'm, I mean, I it's not a problem for me to, you know, go through these, these minutes, of course. In a couple of cases, I'm just thinking that, um, I'm looking at the February one, I guess. There, there are a lot of metrics in there, uh, under the 87 Pleasant Street, the Sullivan's. And I don't know if it's necessary to go into the 483 square feet, which is a 90% increase and you know, so on and so forth. You know, so on and so forth. It may be enough to say there's, you know, approximately this and and there is an increase and it's and we decide that it is not significant, or we did decide that it is significant, or things of that sort. I think as long as we have the the information. I don't know. My my feeling is we could, Montana, I think you could go a little lighter on the detail. It's not a criticism. It's just that it maybe if it's not necessary, you can, I'm sure John can find something else for you to do. But you know.
I guess, and that's a heavy lift, Montana, right? I mean, having to watch the video and and include that amount of details, probably a pretty heavy lift.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
John, you can huddle with Montana and and, you know, work a little bit on. I don't mind. I don't mind the detail, but on the other hand, I don't think it's required to quite this extent.
Yeah.
The least point, it can be helpful on, you know, like when you're writing the decision, for sure. I was also just mindful of your time too, Montana, and I having to have to review the tapes and kind of take all those numbers and kind of probably keep rewinding it and figuring it out. It's probably a an undertaking, but I I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it, I mean, it's no like extra time on my side. I just, again, like I just want to make sure you guys have an accurate reflection for decisions and like when you linger on like certain measurements for like more than like a few minutes. That's why I jot them down. There could be more measurements in minutes, but I I will decrease them moving forward.
Okay, well, why don't we give it a try? All right, and then if if it's if it's not detailed enough. You know, we can get back to you, but sorry, go ahead.
Our application package now asks for those calculations of increase in nonconformity. So most applications, it should be somewhere in the package, either in the plan or in an addition as part of the submission, so it really doesn't have to be in the minutes for us to find it.
I, yeah, I I think maybe a little time spent on making sure that the applicant has fully filled out the application. You know, facades and, you know, all that stuff that we asked for should be there. You know, a depiction of a budding houses and things like that should be there. It isn't. They're just gonna have to go back and do it anyways. It it would make life a little easier if they would have it finalized before the hearing. And not afterwards. It's not fatal, but it's. So have people had a chance to look at this, feel comfortable voting on on each of these two sets of minutes? If so, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, twenty twenty-four. Did I hear a second?
Seconded.
Matt, seconded, all in favor? Were you to the guy?
Oh, Higgins and I. I'm gonna pass.
Okay, all right.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Okay, so it's it's approved, one, two, three, four, five to zip. How about the February minutes? I'd make a motion to approve the February 6th, twenty twenty-four minutes as drafted.
Second.
Okay, move them seconded. Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Lee Darkstye.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Okay, I'll abstain on that one. I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right, do we have any other business?
That is everything.
We we have some some bylaws coming up at town meeting. When is town meeting? May or June? June, all right, so I wouldn't.
Yeah, June.
Does anyone know the date in June? Third or the sixth?
The 6th of June, you're saying?
Um, yeah, it should be this. It's either the third or the sixth.
The third is a Monday and the sixth is a
Thursday.
Thursday, so.
It would be the third. Don't we always have meetings on Monday, town meetings?
I thought they, I thought the third.
Yeah. Well, I'll pencil it in. So when we get drafts from Tom and or his committee, I know he's sent some stuff around. It does take time to look at these. If it's reorganization, not a big deal. If it's something new. I do want to sort of dig in. It's not too late, but my request, Montana, maybe you could help us out in this one, just to be sure that that committee is Cassandra, the liaison, the clerk?
Yes.
So maybe, oh, yeah, Mike, you're on it. So we could, we ought to get a schedule in advance as to when we're going to be seeing drafts. So we can do a decent job. But not not a last minute job.
I I I know Tom, a lot on his plate. He's trying to swallow the ocean a bit. But he's he's looking to try and get stuff out as quickly as he can.
Okay, Mike, you you could kind of help guide this board too, if you know something really substantive that may you know, be embedded or 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 may have implications.
I I think it's all pretty straightforward. I will say there's a, I know, and I know you had raised some issues about parking with Tom in a conversation. He's he he relayed that. And, you know, the 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 only thing about that was that we kind of punted on the width of the parking spots because we felt that that was something that we needed additional guidance from the select board on. So, you know, that 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 was one thing that 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 kind of came out of the meeting we had last night. The other thing, and you know, probably most of the folks on this call haven't heard, but what what Tom is proposing is, and it's kind of a little weird. But it's it's this kind of kind of two-part setback for properties that abut what what for lots in in a business district that abut a residential Tom is proposing this kind of two-part setback, whi- which at least for purposes of my mind, I think about it like a little step. And the idea is that you don't want a a a a building in in the business zone that's abutting a residential zone to kind of go from zero to sixty. Right at the, right at the the at at the at the setback line. So what he's proposing is, you know, your setback line and then a kind of a ten, fifteen-foot kind of mini setback or setback plus where the height is restricted. And then, once you get, you know, kind of further back into the lot, then you can go up to the regular, regular height. So and that's why I kind of think of it, at least in my mind, I think of it as like a little bit of a step. Where that, you know, you're not able to go to the full building height right at the setback line. If you're abutting a, you're abutting a residential zone. You have to, you have a lower, lower height for a little bit, you know, deeper into the lot. So that that's a concept that I think that Tom's proposing, or I guess that the committee is proposing, and I think that'll be kind of interesting. I think it's, in theory, I think it's a pretty good idea, you know, I mean, it it I think if you are as a res, you know, having a a home in a residential area and you happen to be living next to a business area to have kind of, as I say, right at the, right at the, a- at the buffer, you know, the the setback. You have a building going up to max height in the building zone.
I thought this was somewhat covered already in the bylaw. Isn't there a provision that I I could try to speed read the bylaws. It's sort of buried in there somewhere.
It it increases the, it increases the setback for a a building in the business zone that abuts the residential zone?
Yeah, wow, I I think.
But it doesn't do the setback thing where you have
Yeah.
Additional height restriction within the originals. Setback.
As long as they square, I mean, I, you know.
Mike, I had, has anyone had a discussion about the the allowance of using the town parking lot to count as your parking if you're doing a development within a certain five hundred feet or something of a town lot? Because right now, the town is using that.
We we talked about that, and 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 as I say, I I don't think we came to any conclusion because we felt that that was a decision that the select board should be making, not, you know. The 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 bylaws should reflect kind of the decision of the of the select board rather than, you know, the the bylaw committee. You know, kind of setting that type of policy.
Although you guys would be more attuned to to implications perhaps than the select board. I don't mean everybody, but you know, my concern, I hadn't thought of that until it just came up, but of course, I've been concerned for quite a while that this bylaw goes back to the either nineteen sixty-nine or nineteen seventy-seven, when Cohasset was a much smaller town and downtown didn't have the kind of traffic activity that it now has. And within five hundred feet of the town parking lot, I'm sure worked quite well for for a while. But I, what I hear, it's all anecdotal, is that at times, there there's that people are having, employees are having a difficult time trying to find parking.
Uh, no, you are correct, and and, you know, that that that, as I understand it, Atlantica and but again, it's kind of their own proposal. They're going to be leasing parking space for for their employees at a at an offsite location. So it, there's no question, it's a mess, but it's a question of, you know, too many cars and not enough room.
Well, it's also, if, you know, instead of providing parking, if people can develop property that's, you know, within that distance and and they essentially get to use the town lot as their park. So it it increases the amount of kind of permanent parkers in the town lot. So there's not space for people who are coming into town to shop or, you know, parked for a couple hours or three hours. And it's just, I I think it's lost its value. In, because I I don't think that the amount of development around where the town parking lot is was contemplated when this provision went in.
I I I will say it also, one of the things that was brought up was the fact that if if the administrative function of town hall moves to a new location, that will free up parking spots in the current, you know, town. Town hall parking lot, so uh, I I again, you know, I I think some of these are kind of big picture policy type questions that for that 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 the the bylaw committee felt was more within the the brief of the select board than the members of the bylaw committee.
Well, how how then, let's say the select board goes to school on this, decides to make a change, how do they implement that change?
Well, I I I think they would give give guidance and direction to the committee that would then look to, you know, draft, draft the bylaws that that describe the, you know, describe the regime that the select board wants wants to set up.
Okay, well, I guess you do have a select person on the board, on the committee.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Maybe, 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 just a suggestion, because it's not, I mean, it it is a suggestion as really more of a, as a citizen than anything else that might be good for the select board. Does it meet as a board with you guys ever?
No, but I think Tom, 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 Tom makes periodic uh, presentations to them, and one of the things that he was going to to, you know, put in front of them were these kind of thorny parking questions.
Okay, well, as long as it's 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 some light is being shown on this problem. And that people are not, you you don't have two boards thinking it's the responsibility of of the other or or whatever, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Board wants to jump in, fantastic, that's all to the good. Okay, well, just just keep us appraised on on things like this, if you think that it's something of substance or or content that we're going to have to deal with as opposed to simply a a different section or something of that sort.
Yeah, understood. And obviously, you know, if there's, I know you have already, Woody, but if anybody else on this board has some pet peeves, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to Tom. Yeah, he's he's willing to, he's willing to talk about this until the cows come home.
Good, well, you know, I've I've had a few height things and whatever. That I may not see eye to eye, but
Yeah, I think the parking one is a tough one and and
Yeah.
in the center, because, you know, you also, the more you discourage businesses down in that area, the more opportunity there is for that area to become dormant, you know. It's kind of a right now, if you want to open a business down there, and you can utilize that parking, you know. If, I guess, if you tore something down and built something that was going to be a big driver of traffic and
Well, I mean, if you think about it.
Kind of a show, you know.
When when this bylaw was, or or, yeah, definition was put in place. Allowance, there was no beer, there was not no beer garden. The old Red Lion Inn, you know, had very light traffic. There's no James Lane. Five South Main.
No James Lane development.
Yeah. So I I I think the character has changed a lot and probably, there needs to be a longer solution, and we're going to have a as a town, not as a board, but as a town, an issue down in the harbor when the Cohasset Hospitality Partner complex, restaurant complex gets built out and starts, you know, attracting the sixty or seventy or eighty ninety patrons, not to mention the old Salt House. I mean, it's it's already kind of hard to find space there, particularly in the summer. That doesn't mean it's can't be solved or or should be solved, but it is going to be an issue, I think. Need a parking subcommittee. Put Mike on that. I like you too much, Mike. I'm not going to do that.
They have a sidewalk committee, so it could be done, you know.
Yeah.
You have to wait till someone doesn't come to a meeting and then appoint them to the
Oh, we had that chance when when Matt missed the meeting.
I know, you should have done, you should have jumped on that. That's how Mike got on this.
I know.
Remember, April 2nd.
April 2nd, that's what I was gonna say. Don't give me any ideas, John.
Okay, I I got some ideas, Matt. We'll save them for the second. Okay, well, at any rate, I'd make a motion then to adjourn if there's nothing. John, one of the last things, is there anything big coming down the pike? That we can anticipate, or is it going to be?
Only a project on the horizon. There's been some talk about about a storage building on three A. With a telephone tower is now, or the cell tower.
Okay.
That property, so they've they've come, come in front of us, but I think that's where it's allowed use in that area. That property, so they've, they've come, come in front of us, but I think that's where it's allowed use in that area uh too, so they're. They're still in the preliminary plans.
Would, would that be though encompassed in this uh circle, uh, this transit? Oriented multi-purpose housing?
Yeah, I don't know. If it, if that, I think it's just outside of the.
Okay.
Of, of that, um, I think after, it probably cuts off a little after Hingham, but not quite. Uh, close where we're at, but I'll, we'll double check. Uh, I just, I just remember when we did the initial circle, that, that, that was a little farther down.
Yeah, just, just to be sure, I don't, because I don't even know if, if we. Well, we, we'll have this uh provision, state law provision, I don't know if it can. Be allowed to be goggled, gobbled up. With new development, I don't know what, what that implication is.
Yeah, because as, as it sits now, the only thing on it is the, the cell tower, and it's right next, the lot right next to the, where the police and fire station.
Yeah.
Uh, a future building.
Yeah, no, I remember that. Okay. Well, on we go, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Woody Chitikai?
Hey, McMorrissey. Girl Higgins and I.
Lee Darst, I.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay. Everybody have a nice weekend, week. All right.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, everybody.